I'm Brad Sullivan, Chairman of the Board of Finance, and thank you for coming to the Board of Education's budget presentation, to the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectment. I'm going to throw it over to Phil Williams, the Chairman of the Board of Ed, and he can introduce the Superintendent of Budget presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for taking the time to review the Board of Education budget for 2014, 2015. The Board of Education's responsibility is to count and flinten to provide a budget that is both physically and educationally sound. The district has developed a budget process that is driven by the educational needs of our students and guided by our mission statement. Through this process, each of the cost centers presented their needs-based budget, which represents the projected program. Through this process, each of the cost centers presented their needs-based budget, which represents the projected problematic needs for the cost centers. The boards, the board has considered these presentations carefully and asked challenging questions of the superintendent on the compiled budget. With four new board members this year, it was very encouraging to see the level and depth of the questioning on the line addictions contained in our budget by each of the new members. We are seeing very positive improvements in the district, and the board is in unison in our desire to continue this momentum through the programs contained in our budget. So tonight, the Board of Education is respectfully asking you, the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectment, to approve the budget after review process tonight. Thank you, and now we'll turn it over to Superintendent Cross.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. As has been the format for the last several years, the slide presentation will walk through a series of expectations that we have for our district, starting with our mission statement. And as Mr. Williams indicated, the driving forces that ultimately guide our development of the budget, these are expressed here in the four driving forces and unifying principles. And really, I think that each year it is important for us to be able to highlight these because these are critical elements of the decision-making process and what drives the improvement and the focus for the district. So as I walk through, I will spend a little less time on these as we go forward, but it is important that everyone in our district, teachers and administrators, paraprofessionals, custodians, everyone who works with kids, ultimately have a mindset around developing literacy in all areas of the curriculum, in all ways that we work with kids. We want students, all of our students, to be applying that knowledge, not just regurgitating it. And in order to be able to do that, we need to have very collaborative and high-performing teachers. This is reflected both in our hiring processes as well as the collaborative processes that have been built into schedules at each of the four schools. And finally, we look very carefully at the safety in modern facilities that we are offering our students. And you will see as we talk through some of the upgrades that have gone on throughout the district, with both regard to physical safety as well as mental health. So this year, the key focus for the presentation is to understand how, as a district, we have been system-focused for the last five years. We have systematically put in place a number of unifying systems for the entire district so that we're all focused on the same things, and there's a continuous thread of improvement from preschool and kindergarten all the way through to high school. Those systems focus around our students' learning and performance expectation, the curriculum renewal process and implementation, our ongoing professional development for staff, for our teaching staff, as well as those paraprofessionals who are working with our students. And then a logical and systematic way of looking at security and technology, which also serves as a collaboration between the town and the Board of Ed. And then ultimately, the work we are doing as outreach, both within the community and then regional collaborations. So the focus with student-centered performance is really around what are we offering the community in terms of our school system? What is it that we provide our students, our parents, our community as an educational foundation? So we've said it before, we'll reiterate some of that here. Certainly, we still remain among a growing number, but still a small number of districts that provide all-day kindergarten as a way of developing early literacy and setting the stage for school readiness for the remaining 12 years. We continue to be very proud of the product of our K-12 world language, particularly our focus in Spanish. We are now realizing that the impact of that world language program where our students leaving the middle school are actually starting what would be Level 3 Spanish at the high school level, which offers greater opportunity for them in terms of acquiring and really being proficient in a language or options for other languages. We've done an excessive amount of work on our curriculum, and we'll talk a little bit more about that later on. We have a system-wide intervention program, K through 8, for all of our students who don't meet those expectations. You'll see in our budget that we are looking to extend that intervention into the high school. One of the things that has continued to be an issue for us or a point from the community that we look to increase the level of our advanced academic programming and enrichment opportunities. We have expanded the number of students who are taking AP courses. That has grown over the last several years, where we have almost doubled the number of students who are enrolled in our AP and UConn courses. Again, the importance of that is that these courses, when they test on the AP and complete the UConn courses, those are credits that they can transfer when they go on to college. Last year, we presented a whole reorganization of our special ed services, so that we are continuing to work on providing services in district as opposed to sending these out of district. We are very proud of the fact that we maintain more students, more of our students in districts because of the work that our special services department does. Last year's reorganization helped to restructure the autistic program, K through 5, as well as to develop a collaborative process, a feedback collaborative program for 18- to 21-year-olds. We have a high percentage of English-language learners in our district. That number is growing, and it is not just the Spanish language. We have, I think it's 16 or 17 different languages that we are supporting district-wide. We have English-language tutors, our teachers, at the elementary, K-5 level, and at the middle school and high school level. The next bullet is highlighted because one of the things that we have recognized over the course of the last couple of years is that the increased demands on our high school guidance department for student success planning and planning for college and career readiness has required or has increased the amount of work that our folks are doing with all of our students. That combined with the work we're doing with the junior portfolio and our freshman seminar program, again, all building blocks for our students to be successful as they graduate. You will see that we are looking to increase the number of guidance counselors at the high school. As I mentioned earlier, we have taken on an aggressive curriculum renewal and implementation process in the course of the last five years. All curriculum areas have been reviewed, updated, and aligned with state and national standards. You'll hear a lot of buzz around the Common Core State Standards or the new Connecticut Standards. Our curriculum areas match or exceed any of those curriculum standards at this point based on the way that we have worked on, again, a system approach. K through 12 teachers come together to work on the research, to work on the background, and to align those curriculum areas and expectations with state standards, or state and national standards. So whereas other districts are, in many cases, you're hearing that they're adding X number of dollars for their curriculum alignment work because they're trying to catch up to Common Core State Standards, we are at a point where our curriculum expectations, again, match or exceed any of the Common Core State Standards. Our major focus, as we go into the professional development area, is really looking at how do we make sure that we are making the shift instructionally so that we are mimping up more of the application, more of the critical thinking, more of the in-depth reading, the critical reading, and supporting through text kinds of assignments and instruction that are necessary to be successful as our students leave high school. I list the very things here, particularly the teacher evaluation and professional learning plans. Because of the current political climate, many of you may be aware of the fact that in the last week, the governor came out with a press release about pausing the teacher evaluation, state assessment, Common Core State Standards initiatives that he championed at the beginning of his term. The commissioner and the teacher evaluation committee called PEAK have come up with some flexible guidelines for those, for each of those areas. The reality is that our teacher evaluation plan was ahead of the curve, again, and we held tight to the plan that we put into place. We sought a waiver from the state, and lo and behold, the kinds of flexibilities and the kinds of things that they're now saying, "Oh, maybe we should do this," are far, you know, are more in line with what we had proposed in our first go-round. One of the things that we're doing with our administrators this year is that we are working on what we call administrative rounds. It's an opportunity for all of our administrators to visit all four schools together and to examine, to fine-tune, and to look at our data collection on evaluation and observation of teachers. This is a very, I believe, a progressive way for our administrative staff to gain insights as to what grade instruction looks like at each of the other levels, and then it's helping for us to calibrate how we do our teacher evaluation. Our professional development days, you know, have, we have done a lot of work in this area in terms of making sure that the work we do in teacher evaluation aligns to building and district goals. And in the last two years, a lot of work has been done in the, around teacher evaluation, around the co-teaching model, being able to, especially where we have high numbers of special ed students in the classroom, that a special ed teacher and a regular ed teacher are really truly working together to support the needs of all kids. And then an area that we want to continue to expand is the embedded technology for teaching and how we are actually integrating that training within faculty meetings and professional development. So again, the budget includes supporting, the support for all of these areas. The last major area is around security and technology. Over the course of the last three years, we have done a significant value-added for the ancillary and peripheral tools, integrated, the interactive whiteboards, NIMOs, various tools to allow teachers to have and use their technology in a more interactive way, to engage students in their learning in lots of different ways. This is still an area that we have lots of work to do, both in terms of the training and also to finish out, making sure that every classroom is properly equipped with the integrated technology that can be used to support our curriculum areas, particularly literacy and that. We've done a significant reorganization of technology support services. And with the recent departure of the technology director from the Town, from the Board of Ed and Townside, some decisions have been made relative to looking at the expansion of that technology support that's necessary for both the Town and the Board of Ed. So you'll see some additional funding in our budget for a full-time technology director on the board side. Last year's events in December, again, caused us to take a look at all of our security and surveillance that was already in place. And as many of you are aware, we did some significant upgrading of our cameras and our entrance security so that all four buildings now have access card swiping to get into the building for all staff, and all visitors must be plugged into the schools in all four schools. And a piece that is not necessarily being done as much as we'd like statewide, we have engaged with over 40 mental health professionals around the region to create a Shoreline Crisis Response Network. We're in the beginning stages of vetting all of those folks and looking at ways that we can leverage this network to help us with our mental health support and prevention and ultimately response. And I don't want to go into a lot of detail about the community outreach and regional collaboration, but suffice to say that this is a, provides a list of the kinds of regional and community outreach programs that exist that are supported by the budget or enhanced by the budget. Not all of them are fully funded, but many of them are supported through either personnel or funding in the budget. And many of them, you should be familiar with, our Husky Helper Day, for example. We have an international beach cleanup program as well as the high school does the movement program. And I've mentioned Shoreline Crisis Response. So I've given you a sense of the overall budget in terms of what's in there, in terms of the kinds of things, the kinds of things that we're proud of, that we have accomplished, the improvements that we're seeing in our students on assessments, on the number of kids that are taking AP courses and getting credit for that, the number of students that are being accepted at Tier 1 colleges and then going there, the percentage of students that are in fact, the high number of students that are in fact graduating and going on to 2- and 4-year institutions. So as we do that, it was important for us, and the board really wanted me to be able to frame, to some degree, how that foundation, that which is already in the budget, that which we are already supporting, what does that cost us? What did it cost us a year ago? What does it cost to maintain that or sustain that? And then what are some of the kinds of improvements that we have included in this budget? So just to give you some sense, this does not represent the sum total of the entire budget, but it gives you some areas where, that are critical to delivering on the goods that we just talked about. So personnel, ultimately, you know, last year at this time, we were looking at a $13,340,000 budget. This year, we're looking at $13,600,000. That change represents bargaining, collective bargaining agreements, negotiated agreements with teachers, administrators, paraprofessionals, and our secretaries, as well as our Terms of Employment folks. So the real improvement area is that you will, is, as we walk through the budget book itself, we'll explain more in detail the three positions that we are adding to this year's budget. The math coach interventionist at the elementary level, literacy coach and interventionist at the high school, the guidance counselor at the high school, and then the remaining portion of a full-time business manager is included in that, $250,000. In instruction, this represents the instruction materials and resources, textbooks, those kinds of numbers that ultimately are the foundation on an annual basis for maintaining the resources that we need to teach kids in the classroom. This covers everything from paper and consumables to textbooks. And looking at last year, it was roughly $423,000. We're up to $495,000 this year. And then in addition to that, there are, as part of the Curriculum Implementation Program, which every year we have some chunk, or typically we have some chunk, there's $70,000 additional in that area for improving, and it's ultimately focused at the middle school and high school in math and in world language. Co-curricular, this ultimately involves all of our after-school activities, our athletics and enrichment activities. And the difference here is that we have reorganized some of our co-curricular activities. We've realized some savings as a result of some of the purchasing we were able to do through athletics for uniforms, et cetera. So there has been some savings, if you will, in the sustenance level. And then we are increasing our enrichment programs and our reconditioning programs for athletics. Some total of that represents almost $40,000. Special services and transportation, the change is ultimately in those in just maintaining what we have. Last year ago, we went out for a bid for a new transportation contract. Ultimately, by going out to bid, we ended up saving almost $300,000 over the five-year contract. However, each year, it's still, there is some incremental increase, but, so that represents that contractual change. And then the operations, again, is the sum total of all of the other portions, essentially all the other portions of the budget, to maintain the facilities, our technology, our printing and communications, et cetera. And the $20,000 represents the additional dollars for the technology director in that line. So that gives you a framework for, I hope gives you a framework for what it cost a year ago, essentially, and how to sustain that and what the improvements are. This gives you a breakdown of the budget as a whole. Ultimately, 89% of the budget goes toward instructional programming, personnel, et cetera. Operations is 11%, and that's to maintain the buildings and to maintain technology and communications. To look at it a slightly different way, this, the small chunk at the top, the 11% in the very light blue, represents operations as a sum total. And then break out the other components of instructional programming, the 89%. Personnel is a little over, almost $14 million. Personnel benefits, just under $6 million. And this includes health insurance, social security, employment benefits, or unemployment benefits and workforce comp. Special services, again, about 19% of the budget is our mandated programming for the identified special ed students. Student transportation represents that contract. And again, that, oh yeah, that represents about 3%. And then the instructional resources, those, the materials, again, ultimately, about 2% of the budget. And then co-curricular activities are about 2%. This flips that around, and a big chunk, obviously, becomes the instructional programming. Our facilities cost, just to maintain the facilities, is about 5% of the budget. The operational personnel, the people, you know, our custodians, maintenance folks, those folks who are strictly focused on the maintenance of the buildings, maintenance of people in the buildings. The operational personnel is $4 million. Technology represents about 1% of our total budget as, and it's communication, actually, communication is over 60%. But that's what it boils down to, the two major areas. So our overall budget, proposed operations budget, not counting capital, not counting debt service, is $31,502,543. It's an increase of $958,892, 3.14%. In looking at last year's budget to this year, including operating capital and debt service, the difference, or the change amounts in the end represent $1.14 million, or about 3.6% increase. The note at the bottom is ultimately to reflect the fact that the $402,000 in capital last year was the approved amount. And then prior to the referendum, there was a determination, the Board of Ed was directed to use $193 for end-of-year funds toward capital items that would be purchased, or that could be purchased prior to June 30. So the $402 was the actual amount that was approved and then adjusted based on end-of-year funds. Last couple of years, we've been sharing some of the state revenue information just so that it had some, you know, basic understanding or that everyone has some basic understanding of what comes into the Town based on the Board of Ed. So ultimately, the Education Cost Sharing Grant is a formula-based grant from the state that each Town receives based on a number of factors. And as we discussed in the past, the formulating is flawed. We actually, you know, probably are still benefiting from that flaw. Ultimately, we're receiving a little over $6 million from the state that is designated to be used for education. And then in addition to that, and again, this is handled differently in different districts, we ultimately build in the total cost of special ed in our budget between the federal grants and the budget from the Town and recognize that all of the excess cost money that we get back from the state on an annual basis ends up being revenue for the Town to offset the budget. So the 13, 14 number is an anticipated number. You get this effectively in the, in the, in the years. Based on, at the end of the year, the tot, you know, based on the total number of students and the percentage, based on an 80%, let me back up. Any student, any special ed student whose cost to the district is 4.5 times what the per pupil expenditure is, then the state, by statute, is supposed to provide the Town 100% or the school system, 100% reimbursement for any dollars over and above the 4.5 times the district's per pupil expenditure. In the last several years, it has ranged between 70 and 80%. And one never knows until the legislative session is over. But we, based on the current thinking that about 80% is what we'll get, we are projecting that we will be right around $400,000 that will be then returned to the Town or will come to the Town directly to offset budget costs. So you get a trend line of what it looks like over the last several years. And it's hovered, hovered right around that area. Okay, so what we've done in the last couple of years is we have kind of the preview. We've walked through the budget book so that you're familiar with what's in the book, and then we can take some questions at the end. We have added some factors this year. In the background information section, you'll see, again, our mission statement, our district goals for the current year, our foundation skills and com- goals for the current year, our foundation skills and competencies, and I haven't spoken about these this year so much, but this is a critical part of our curriculum work, and you'll see, and I hope many of you may be able to participate or at least observe, our first round of portfolio exhibitions this year, where students will be using a combination of foundation skills and competencies and the high school academic performance standards to speak to how they have grown as a student up to a certain point, and then what their, what their strengths and weaknesses are as they head into their senior year, and on beyond that. What they're, what it is is engaging students in their own learning, and being able to help them understand or to articulate to a, to an adult audience how, what they have done up to this point has been successful, and what things have not been so successful, and what they need to do better. I think it will be quite an enlightening opportunity for both parents, teachers, and our community. The celebrations and accomplishment page, again, focuses on those things that we are particularly proud of, and, you know, without, you know, reading through all of them, I would, you know, suggest to you that these are critical elements of the work that we do and that the budget supports on an annual basis. The next piece is some assumptions that we take into account with regard to building the budget. In addition to Mr. Williams' comments about, you know, being a needs-based budget, we really do take a look at our enrollment every year to be able to determine what makes sense for us for, you know, and are we at a point where we can make some reductions or reorganize staffing? Several years ago, actually, the first year I was here, we did a pretty significant reduction in staff, given the fact that we are right around 200 certified staff, and reduced by 10. And in the, in the last couple of years, we've been able to leverage retirements and, and some of the declining enrollments at, at the different schools, to reallocate those resources for some of the instructional coaching that we've, that we're adding, you know, adding to this year to round out the work that we've been doing there. But we, in the past, we've been able to do that without adding additional positions. I think the other piece that I've talked about, in terms of work that has been done in special ed, in terms of cost savings and containment and collaboration, again, last year's reorganization saved about $75,000 in our overall budget with reducing the out-of-district costs. Health insurance, we're, again, the work that we've done, both in terms of negotiated contracts, bargaining unit contracts, redesigning the health plan, as well as pushing the envelope on going out to bid for that. We haven't actually changed carriers at this point, but we also haven't entered along with the town a health collaborative for dental and prescription, which looks to be providing some additional savings in that area. Eventually, the plan is to move the full medical community collaborative as well. We've talked a little bit about the education cost-sharing, and there's a little blurb at the bottom that also speaks to the minimum budget requirement that has surfaced over the course of the last couple of years. The minimum budget requirement is just that. It is a minimum that the town, in the place of the town, so any town, not our town, but that a town would not supplant the budget with any increases in education cost-sharing. And then, as that had become a flat-funded element, the education cost-sharing had become flat, they changed in 2005 to make some additional requirements, a minimum budget requirement that you cannot, once you, once you have established a budget, an operating budget for a particular fiscal year, then the next fiscal year can't go below that amount unless there is a decline in enrollment. And then, up to a threshold, $3,000 per student can be, it can be reduced. But the reality is, is that the town, or the state provides that MBR number when they, at the end of the legislative cycle, they indicate what that MBR is going to be. Budget calendar, something we've always included, our enrollment statistics. And again, at this point, the projected number of students that will be reduced, and I take a minute to just explain the difference between our actual enrollments on this enrollment page compared to what the state uses for that number. The state uses resident students as their enrollment figure. Resident students means it's all of the students that are actually enrolled in our schools, as well as any students for which we are responsible that go to magnets, that go to vocational agricultural schools, and/or that are outplaced through special ed. They all count toward our big total. This chart only reflects the kids who are enrolled effective October 1 of a given year.
In the public schools.
In the public schools. So this chart only reflects those who are actually on our books as enrolled in our schools on October 1. So it doesn't, it doesn't take into account fluctuations that happen during the year. It's based on October 1, so we have a threshold every year. The projections, this question has come up in the past. We did have, we've had a couple of projections done by outside folks in 2010 and 2012. This adjustment on the page that is in the budget book reflects the 2012 projections and an accommodation for the actuals, so that everything above the projected line are the actuals, again, back to October 1, for, what was that, the number of students who were actually in the, in the schools. And then, the, the projection that was done last time in 2012 provided a five-year average index, so that we were able to recalculate or adjust based on the actual numbers for, over the last five years, 2010 to 2014. Okay? The back page gives you a breakdown, as we have in the past, of grade-by-grade enrollment, anticipated average class sizes, number of teachers in each of those grades, and that we do, it's pretty easy to do K through 8, and then the high school becomes a little different because it's more based on the number of courses in each, or the number of, yeah, the number of course offerings in each of the departments, and then the range of class size in the portion. But it gives you a basic sense. If we were a college, and promoting our college as, you know, being, you know, right on the money, you know, they talk about, you know, 1:20 ratio for students, and that's a, that's a really new thing, because it gets the individualized kind of instruction. So, we're at that, at that. Behind tab 3, again, this is a slightly different way to approach some of the information that I've provided tonight in terms of program enhancements, and with a, with a brief explanation of how we are, or why those numbers exist, and what our intent for supporting, or why we're, why we're supporting those things in the budget. I would draw your attention particularly down at the bottom, the enrichment and advanced academic opportunities. The $31,000 there is really designed as an expansion of the, yeah, the Pearson After-hours Program, which is an enrichment program, supporting the variety of activities, like the invention convention in continental math, as well as our musical there. And then, it's an expansion of some of the programming through the Mars offering at the, at the middle school, which is a math and science seminar approach. The $8,000 in athletics is really an effort on the part of our athletic coordinator to make sure that all of the physical equipment that we, that we use or we distribute to kids are actually reconditioned and certified, so that they're safe for our students, you know, a risk liability factor. The backside of that page, again, highlight a handful of the cost containment efforts that we have endeavored over the course of the last four or five years, and the reflection of those savings in this year's budget. The next section is the, if you've seen this, you have seen this before, the explanation of our objects. We had hoped to revamp this whole section based on the new financial software, but we'll do that next year. That's been a little slower process, and Willie and I are operating without the advantage of those business support services, so you get a similar format to last year. But essentially, the explanation piece just gives you a thumbnail of what the, what the particular object code for certified salaries or non-certified or public utilities gives you a sense of what's included. And then, the next, after that, you have two pages, one that compares the change to last year's budget as a, as a percent change, or a percent change up or down. And then, the page after that gives you a sense of the budget as a percent of the entire budget, and again, compares it to last year's budget. And again, this, some of this gives you a sense of, or a reflection of that foundation that I was talking about, and the sustenance. And again, some of that, some of these, you'll see as comparison, that where that sustenance component lies. The next section is the meat of the budget, the nine-item breakdown for each of the nine cost centers. Again, I, you know, point to the fact that we try to provide as much information about key line items, so anything that has an asterisk in the right-hand column, there should be, and we've checked this a couple of times, but there should be a corresponding note directly on the page above the numbers. So, as you go through, you should see an explanation. Some of them are very perfunctory, they're, you know, they're, it's basically based on the contracts. Some of them have a little bit more detail, especially those that have some significant change. As you get into, you know, for example, you may note in our Morgan budget, there's a $9,000 increase in our all-ed program. There's a bullet that explains that that represents the expansion of that program based on student needs and student involvement, and the need for additional certified staff to cover specific subject areas. But again, there are a number of note, notes that correspond to those asterisks in each of the line items. The last section is really the supporting document section, and this year, we've added a, because we haven't been asked, we haven't asked for new positions really in a while. So, we've come up with a format that I think is useful in explaining what the purpose, what the goal is, and how each of these positions support the core or foundation portion of the budget, as well as what, what additional supports each of those positions will provide. Again, I won't read to you each of the positions in terms of the full need. The math interventionist and coach, two years ago, we added K-5 math interventionist. We had originally wanted to have two K-5, based on the work that we had been doing in literacy, where we actually have four literacy specialists, K-25, with a subset of paras that helped with the intervention. We saw the benefit, we see the benefit of that in terms of keeping more and more kids at or above the threshold for falling below grade level. The math, as, as we readjusted our math curriculum to meet the new standards, there was clearly some additional support that was going to be necessary for both the instructional piece as well as the intervention piece. That model has worked very well, although the, the one position is stretched very thin. We are proposing a second position at this point that would be shared, K through 5. An additional element to, that I haven't spoken a lot about along the professional development, team structure and continuity of instruction comes with the team leader model at middle school. This is something that has been long overlooked at the middle school level, something that, you know, most middle schools have a framework for team leader, team leader leadership, and the middle school staff have looked at this as a major area for moving forward with their instructional improvements, you know, in cross-grade levels, but also from 6th grade to 8th grade. And this team would be, help with, help the administration with some of the coordination and consistency of delivery of instruction. The literacy coach at the, at the high school, one of the things that we have been struggling with, and we tried a number of different ways to reframe or rethink the kind of support and intervention and instructional changes that we need to have take place at the high school level. And ultimately, right now, our, our coaching intervention model ends at 8th grade, and as the, as we are amping up our expectations, and we've made, again, we've made several attempts at rethinking or reshaping the instructional model at the high school, we are looking to add an instructional, a literacy instructional coach, which will really support both changes in instruction in all disciplines, not just in, in English language arts, but really in all of the other disciplines as well, as there is increased need for students to be reading more critically in all of their subject areas, and then being able to support arguments and positions in science, as well as in, with, when reading literary works. So that's that position. And then, we've spoken, I spoke a little bit more about this on the beginning of the budget, or beginning of the presentation, regarding to the need for an additional guidance counselor at Morgan. And this, again, deals largely with the increased demands on the three counselors we have for transitioning students as they enter in 9th grade, all the way through when they exit as high school graduates. The next document reflects the out-of-district special ed students. Again, we omit the, their names, but give you a framework for where they are going, the transportation cost, the tuition cost. And again, this is a mandated and part of special ed. Through the PPT process, there are students with needs that we are not able to fully meet, or in some cases, the courts decide we are not able to fully meet, or DCF or some other state agency determines, because they either are foster children that are coming into a system, whatever. But these are, this, this represents the sum total of our out-of-district placements. The next page reflects, again, a grant summation sheet of grants that come into the district, and it gives you a reference point for the last five or six years of those funds that come in, and where they come from and what they're used for. And then, you have a copy of our CEC that has been recommended or approved from CEC for this year. With that, before I take questions, I would very much like to express my With that, before I take questions, I would very much like to express my appreciation to the, our board ed for their support and scrutiny of this budget, as we've done through the cost center presentations and the work that we do to get ready to present to the board. Our administrative team, all of whom are here tonight, and their efforts to build a budget that is driven by needs of their students in their buildings, and to articulate and advocate for what they believe is important for our district going forward. The central office staff and business staff, particularly, again, this year, without the full support of a business manager, I rely very heavily on the administrative staff, or the administrative assistant staff and the business office to pull and research and gather information for me, so I can put something that's cogent and reasonable together. And then ultimately, our special ed support staff, because I think one of the things that we fail to recognize is that if we were not doing as good a job with our special ed students, our out-of-district and our legal fees and all of the other expenses associated with special education would ultimately be much higher than they are. I'll leave you with our mission and will entertain questions that you might have this week. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question on special ed students, our responsibility until they're 24?
Until they're 21 or until their 21st birthday.
Because I see it almost happened from 1993 to 94, so they're about...
Some of them are there, yeah. We're coming. Did I say that, June?
It's kind of hard in these day and age to see a textbook budget go up so much. I mean, you know, sometimes you hear that textbooks are absolutely, as soon as they're printed. Is there a part of that that's an online component? And I understand too, and maybe you could just, might have, just show what that is and whether or not we have, we have like long-term forecasting, because I notice even in the historical textbooks, it jumps and then it goes down, it jumps, it goes down. So is there some sort of replacement cycle? I mean, is there anything going forward and how much of that is the online, or is...
Do you want to jump on that?
Are we buying books?
Yeah, this year, the focus with textbooks, both through curriculum implementation as well as within the buildings, we've tried to align our textbook adoption with the curriculum efforts in renewing our curriculum, aligning our standards, and then looking at resources and materials. So we have had that plan and you've seen that along the way. This year, the focus is completing our math curriculum materials, grades six through eight at Elliott. Currently, their materials are approximately 10 years old. We have replaced with a heavily technology-based K-5 math program that's commonly or aligned and aligned with our new curriculum units and sequence. And then last year, we were able to replace, make a selection and replace our algebra and geometry. So we have those two ends. And the middle school really has been exploring materials and taking what they currently have and trying to kind of align with the new changes to the curriculum. But what they're seeing in math is it really is about a change in the way we teach math and the way we have kids engage in math. And so the challenge is finding quality materials that will help stretch the application and the building of foundational math concepts versus the rote algorithm, this is how you solve the problem. So they are exploring right now and looking at a variety of things. But all of the textbooks we've purchased in the last three, four years since I've been here, all have that online textbook with lots of online resources that kids can access at home as well as a hard copy textbook. Some of the publishers are moving to completely online, and we're looking at some of those programs, but also with the understanding that we do have a population of students in our community that don't have that access. Or we have families that have some technology in their homes, a computer, but have several children, and of all are trying that access. We're trying to balance those two things. But in the past, where we would buy extra textbooks and have one in the classroom and at home, we've been able to really streamline and take advantage of some of the online components. But that's one major area is really our math curriculum and giving them the quality materials to really take it to the next level at the middle school. They've done a lot of work internally, developing things and going to national conferences and bringing, bringing things back, but they need that solid foundation. And then the other big area this year is world language, our Spanish program. Jack mentioned that earlier. We have worked really hard in the last three years to take our K-12 world language program and really accomplish what the initial goals were set out for that program. And that is grades K through six, because we start so early, grades K through six are really teaching the Spanish I curriculum. So what our goal is, is by the end of sixth grade, students, many students, and not all, but many students will be ready to move on to a Spanish II program that we spread out over grade seven and eight. And we're in year two of that implementation, where we have a pilot group of about 45 students in eighth grade who are completing Spanish II. So they're going to go into the high school into a Spanish III program. So that's really accelerated our program. And we have another group of kids of about 60, I think, 50 to 60, in seventh grade, we're starting year one of the Spanish II program. So because we've been able to do that, we had to take a hard look at our materials and that sequence, because we must offer the same Spanish II course to the middle school students as we do to the high school students. So this textbook purchase is really to ensure that alignment. And again, the materials that the high school's currently using in Spanish, they are no longer publishing, so they're completely off the market. And so we had, did have to look at a new publisher and materials that can enhance the conversational side and really develop a fluency in the language is what we're trying to do in that program. So those are the kinds of materials we're looking at.
I understand you're buying a lot of new laptops for students because of testing, you have to be done on laptops?
Yes.
The tests have to be done on...
No, they don't have to be done on laptops.
Or on computers?
But they will, the new test will be done, all students will be tested on the computers.
And that's all grade levels, they will...
Three through, three through eight and eleven, yes.
Then they will have, so they currently don't have access, each student doesn't have access?
Not all students have to take the test at exactly the same time, but we need to be able to make sure that we have enough at each level to be able to not have it take, go beyond the test window in terms of the duration. So we have, yes, in our capitals, we have added, we do have some additional computers this year specifically for purposes of, to address the need for the test.
I noticed, speaking of guidance counselors, that guidance counselor budget at Elliott is going down. What's, what's...
Because we replaced a teacher, a guidance counselor retired here, at the end of last year.
Yeah.
We hired someone new, had a little cost, trying to be cost efficient.
And so, and so the extra guidance counselor at high school, do you, is there a benchmark out there as far as a guidance counselor or student to guidance counselor ratio that is kind of standard?
I don't, there probably is a recommended number. I don't know that off the top of my head. I can certainly dig one up for you if you'd like.
That's 51, yeah.
It's more than 51. I can guarantee that. Yes, sir?
There was sort of a segue there, that last statement about the savings of the teacher. Because my next question was going to be, was why did the director of technology get boosted, I know he's a new position, by $21,000 from the fellow that left?
Marketplace?
$21,000, what, Jack? I mean, I know that we should offer.
Well, here's the...
And you sent it to come here.
Here's the story that I have to tell you. You went out twice for a position. And the first time around, the person we offered the job to had an increase over the previous position based on what we understood from the marketplace, went back to notify the district from whence he came that he was entertaining and had accepted this position. They subsequently, on the spot, jumped his salary, that additional $10,000 over what we were offering, and so he declined the position thereafter. Our second candidate would have, based on the dollars that they were currently making, wouldn't have come here for less than $105,000, and then ultimately decided that this wasn't the right match for him. So we went out a second time. But in doing so, we also then reevaluated the, again, the marketplace. And what we realized, you know, unfortunately, is that the, the previous technology director was underpaid. And that's, that's the bottom line.
Jack?
I'm sorry? Yes, ma'am?
The additional positions that you're asking for, can you just go through e-tron and tell us what, no, you can't exactly, that's all exactly what it costs for?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, what we have projected is, for the two literacy coaches, we've taken into 60,000 is just as a ballpark number?
For both?
For each, for math and literacy coaches at the high school. The guidance counselor, 55,000. Again, largely because both of them, all three of those positions would end up having to have a master's degree, and the guidance counselor wouldn't necessarily have to be, you know, an experienced person. We want to get the best person for the job, but that wouldn't necessarily require particular years of experience, because the two literacy, or the literacy and math coach would have to have some, you know, at least four or five years in the classroom to have demonstrated that they know what they're doing. And then the team leaders, the total for that, there's seven, it's a stipend position, so based on that, it's about 28,000.
Or...
Total, no, total for all seven.
So as far as new bodies are concerned, you're saying there's an additional three?
There are three certified FTEs, new bodies. We are, again, in the budget, is included, however, an additional 50,000 for the business manager. So that's a 0.5 increase in the position. And then a 0.2, essentially a 0.2 increase in the technology director may get a full-time position, and it's about 20,000. They're replacements, but a little bit of an expansion. Yep?
Kansas? You got one?
I did.
You did.
Nobody else.
Well, I had, I had a little help from my...
There was.
I got married upstairs.
I was going to say, yeah.
It's all right.
One person on the snow day, or two people on the snow day doing this.
Yes, sir?
Well, just to talk about the overall budget here, just the 3.14%. Do you guys feel that? I don't even know how you guys can come here with a straight face and bring that in there with, with the surpluses we've had. I mean, it's just like, I'm just saying the overall thing, and I'm not saying we don't need any of these teachers, anything. If I was setting the budget, which I do every year for my stuff, my companies, I would have started with that minimum and worked backwards. I would take off the 3,000 for the 40, I don't know how many kids there are, 15 kids or whatever it is, 45,000. But say you start with that, I can't even fathom how you guys can come in with almost a million dollars and we have, every year, we have a surplus. And substantial surplus. I mean, it was almost 900 last year, so it took 300,000 for capital year before, I don't know why, it's off the top, but substantial amount. And you guys come in, I just...
And I think you know why they have the surpluses, and we've discussed that, and it's unforeseen things, and I don't think it's fair to all the people out there that have, that have put the time in the budget.
So what's the history, Val?
What?
Has it been one every time?
It's rather than a deficit every time.
I'm just saying, has there been?
Yes.
Can we cut, take the, take the smallest and cut in half, how about that?
But it's been in personnel. So how do, what do you have?
Well, then who's negotiating the contracts? I mean, I look at, I'm just like, it just, it's just like the fantasy world.
In my own...
Well, here's the thing about surpluses, but no.
Somebody asked, what was the surplus this year?
We don't know.
Right now, I can't project.
No, here's what we do know, and we have the budget in front of us that has the budget and it has the actual as of now. Now technically, that actual should be 58% of the budget depend, if it was spread evenly across the months. So some of it is not 58% right now. So maybe what, and some of it is a lot lower, we're spending a lot less, some of it's at 20%, some of it's at 40%. So are, maybe the better question is, are there things that are not cyclical in this budget that, where we could actually point to some of these and say, okay, we know that 90% of that budget is spent in May? Because personnel, you know, it should be cyclical, but some isn't. There's like professional development in here, that's a $6,000 budget, and there's been $33 spent. So those are areas that maybe we could cut. So when you see that, and then you see another $6,000, you know, so what is that cyclical? What are you expecting to spend that's not spread, you know, one twelfth of every month?
But even, just one thing, though, like you have here for last year, that's the budget number, but then you go to the audit number, it's, it's 29 million, whatever, I mean, there's another, that's $715,000 difference than what you guys have written here to what we actually is on our, what they actually had in the audit.
So that's a valid question, but you know, so you just ask the question rather than say, you can't come in here as a straight, with a straight face.
Well, maybe if you let me get to it, Val, I didn't get a chance. I was going to, and I understand, maybe I didn't word it correctly and you set it up, but I'm saying, there's things like that that just, I looked through it quickly. We just got these things, but it's, it seems crazy.
The two areas that, for the last, and, and I have to agree that I have a hard time looking at the experiences that we've had with regard to the number of retirements over the course of the last three years, because the retirement number and the insurance savings are two things that I, I don't have a guarantee on. I have one retirement at this point. So again, to Val's point, I have to calculate based on what I have. What I do have and what I have done over the last several years is to do some trending of who could, who's, who's eligible to retire. And that doesn't always happen. People who are, you know, we've had, we've been all over the place in terms of teachers who were eligible and stayed on two or three extra years, teachers who were not, you know, that from my vantage point, wouldn't have been eligible, chose to retire for either health or spousal reasons or whatever. But the reality is, is that that, looking at that trend, the number of potential retirements are much smaller this year than they have been over the last three years, which accounted for at least half or better of the surplus. The second piece is that we, you know, to your point of negotiating the contracts, and I take umbrage with the insinuation that we're not doing our freaking jobs, is that the negotiated agreements over the course of each of the last bargaining units have been in under 3% for each of those bargaining units on an annual basis. And it is a collective bargaining process. We don't get to just say, you're only going to get 0% or 1%.
No one's saying 0% or whatever.
But the point is that we've negotiated those in, along the lines of the way that we're supposed to do it, and they are binding. That, we don't have any choice about that. We go forward with trying to bring those, the cost factors down as much as possible. The second piece along those negotiated lines has to do with the insurance. And because of the way we negotiate the insurance plans for each of those bargaining units, all five, all four groups now are on the same plan, and we have realized much greater savings than anyone could have dreamed, because we changed the dynamics. And we've realized those, and guess what? The town got it back. You know, it's not like, you know, we're, you know, we're anticipating...
But I'm saying, then the minimum goes up every year.
Look at the, the insurance budget. The insurance budget is flat funded this year, again. I don't know, I don't have a new number yet. It might be 5%, it might be 6% increase over last year.
And you're trending exactly what your budget is.
Right.
Based on your monthly costs. I checked it today.
So, I mean, we're, you know, we have, we have cut insurance by over a million dollars, almost $2 million since I took, took over. So, yeah, it, it could be $2 million more, and I wouldn't have had any control over that if we hadn't done anything with insurance. So the budget you're looking at, I agree, 3% compared to what we've done the last few years seems high. But before I took over, you were looking at 5% and 6% and 7%. What have you seen over the last five years? This is the biggest increase that you're, that you've seen in the last five years, and we've identified specific needs that we have for the budget. That's what I'm, I've, I've got to come forward advocating for what I believe is important for our district and for the community. And we've cut, and we've cut, and we've cut. And we've cut, and we've cut, and we've cut everywhere we could.
But Jack, you are increasing your personnel by three people here.
Yes, we are, identifying needs.
And, and that is very hard to justify when you're looking at a decrease in enrollment of approximately a hundred kids over the last number of years.
And increased demands from the state defense.
I, I think we should also remind people too, of the last budget hearing, where we did hear lots of people come out and ask for an increase. They actually articulated very well of what we need in our school system, what the parents want in our school system. And they talked about people who are, who are doing a breach.
What are the parents wanting that they are not receiving?
Enrichment programs, talented, gifted, that's their name. They want another guidance counselor, that's their name.
That's not covered by a literacy coach or a math coach.
It's one of the.
That's covered by the, by the personnel in high school.
We also have an elected board of education of citizens who sit here and vet the budget that's presented to them, that go to multiple meetings every month, you know, I mean, it's, I don't look at a three point one four percent increase and think of it as crazy, I mean, I.
I will get a million dollars and think that that's, that's a lot of money.
When you have a surplus, right?
I, I.
I'm not saying valid.
I don't understand, I don't understand the surplus, the, the, the bullseye on the surplus, because, so what do you, you expect them to come to?
Well, I'm just saying, every time, that means our minimum goes up every year, it doesn't matter whether.
So what would happen if there was a deficit? It can't be a deficit.
It can be, but then they gotta come to.
Well, they.
How many deficits, how many deficits does we have? Or even close, or even within a hundred thousand.
You wanna be the first one to have one?
More of it.
John?
What would you rather, overall?
I don't understand why, plus it encourages.
We've appropriated money every year.
Right. We've had a deficit last couple of years.
Right, so come back and get more money then.
No, what Tom, what Tom's, what Tom's pointing out is during the course of the year, we appropriate money from our fund balance during the course of the year. So actually, when, at the, by the end of the day, our overall budget.
We increased it.
Was increased.
By two million dollars.
Correct, because of appropriations out of fund.
That's right.
Although some of it was for the storm, which got stuck into the wrong area of the budget.
But it's still the board of that, though.
But it's an operating deficit last year.
Right.
I think, you know, part of the problem that I'm hearing from everybody is, everybody's got a beef about a surplus at the end of the year.
I don't either, I don't have a beef about a surplus.
All right, so.
I say thank you for returning it, thanking for managing the money.
Well, you do the very best with the information that you've given. Okay, John, to your point of coming in with a three point one four percent increase, if you looked at the numbers, the vast majority of that is in personnel costs, which are all under contract. And I said on those negotiation committees, and we fought to keep the increases to the bare minimum without having to go to arbitration. And some of them, we had to go to arbitration, which cost us tens of thousands of dollars to do. So you get to the point where, okay, we'll agree to a two percent, a two point eight percent increase versus spending fifty thousand dollars in attorney's fees to go and fight it through arbitration. And then, and then you stand a high risk of losing it, because everybody else in the state is getting three to four percent increases. So we negotiate to the very best of our abilities to keep the costs at a bare minimum and still maintain a decent educational system.
All right. I think, I think that point is taken and understood, but the big picture is, we're looking at a thirty-one million dollar budget, and we have a sixty-five million dollar school coming home to roost in the next two years for, and a declining school population. And to be increasing the personnel of the school system right now to the tune of three hundred thousand dollars, I mean, when you add in twenty thousand dollars for technology, fifty thousand dollars for the business manager, two counsel, I mean, two coaches, the guidance counselor. I think at this point in time, we have to be a little bit more thoughtful about, about increasing administrative costs in the education budget. I think there's gonna be a huge response when that school gets added into the town budget. And I think being proactive now and, and keeping a hard line on the education budget would go a long way towards getting those budgets passed in the future. I mean, there's, there's a limit to how much this town can afford. Thirteen thousand people here, two thousand of which are students in the school system. I mean, that's not a lot of taxpayers to foot this bill. We have to be extremely conscious of what we're asking for them, and that debt is gonna increase by about ten percent in the next few years with the school bonding coming up. So, I mean, we all have our wish lists, and we have our want lists, and we have our need lists. I think we have to pay a lot of attention to the need list versus the want list.
Is it, is it a need for the community to be able to graduate students from our high schools that can go to?
But how is that any different from last year or the year before?
You gotta let him finish.
Before. How is that any different? That's not something that's just looming on the horizon, that's always been there, I hope.
Well, I think so for math.
Yeah, if you let me finish.
Yeah, you gotta let him finish.
Is it the desire and the needs of the community to graduate students that can go to college, whatever type of college they wanna go to, whether it is a tier three, two, or one, and not have difficulties in being able to, something like, into those classes? We're hearing back from some of the universities in the state that the kids that they're getting into the colleges need remediation, because they don't know how to do certain things, and that's why you have these coaches.
Why isn't that being addressed on the level of the personnel that we have at this point? I mean, is that, is that a ridiculous question?
Yeah, no, that's not where it needs to be addressed, in my opinion, it needs to be addressed back at the family level.
You can, you can always do that, we can always do that.
Well, you can always do that, but when we look at what the state is imposing upon the school districts all across this state of Connecticut and the nation from the federal government, they're telling us that we have to do this, we have to do that, we have to make, make sure that all of our programs meet a, a set standard. And a lot of the kids that are coming in are not even able to read when they, you know, come into the worst of the school. And that is because the parents are spending either more time away from their children, because they have to work so much to be able to afford things, or they don't care, and they've abdicated their responsibilities. Jack is put together with his.
So when you say a child can't read when they come to school, isn't that what they're coming to school for?
If you want to abdicate the responsibility to raise the children, then yeah, we need to have budgets like this to be able to deal with those children that come to class that aren't prepared.
And we, we have. I think that, you know.
You can't continue to do that.
I wanna put a, a finer point on what we have identified as a need and why these positions are there. And also the fact that, that the work that we have done over the last five years has, has truly had benefit. We have reframed the work that we do with our instructional coaches at the elementary level to reduce the number of students who go on from one level to the next not having the skill set they need. We still continue to get students coming to us that are not entering at kindergarten and first grade, but come in at fifth grade, come in at seventh grade, come in at the high school. We have an increasing number of students who are coming from, that come without any English at all. We've, we're, and we're looking at how best to address those needs across the district. We have a K eight intervention program that is working for the most part, always can be improved. We have a very limited intervention model at the high school, and we're trying to address that. And that is, that, so that's, that becomes a priority. The instructional staff, and, and again, I think the issue is that, you know, as the expectations for staff increase in terms of their instructional practice, we have, we're, we ramp up our, our professional development, but we also need to be able to do some of that indebted ongoing training. Again, the coaching intervention is provide a double-edged sword of being able to go in and model for our content area teachers how to embed literacy development in the science, in the math, in the social studies areas, in health, all the areas where kids need to be reading and analyzing in all of those areas. And it's very different than it is for reading a, a narrative or a literary piece to reading a science text. The fact is, is that we're, that, you know, to, to Phil's point, we are increasingly seeing, you know, improvement in our students across the board. Our test scores are showing that, our, you know, not.
We had some of those statistics.
Not, not as, you know, still not as, as effervescent as I'd like, but we're making progress. We're, we're seeing, I mentioned, you know, we, we doubled the number of students taking AP courses and UConn courses, so we're, we're pushing that level of challenge.
Jen, just off the top of your head, do you know the percentage of Morgan graduates that go on to further education? Do you have a?
I don't have a percentage for you, we, we're just looking at the fact that in this last, last group, last graduating class, a hundred and eleven kids went on to four, to two and four-year schools. Out of that graduating class, about one thirty.
It's about one thirty.
And of those, about seventy of them went to tier one schools. About twenty-six or seven went to community college or technical school, and then the remaining fall between the, you know, tier two schools. So we have a, we have a pretty good track record. You know, we're, you know, we're looking at graduation rates, four-year cohort graduation rates that are ninety-two and ninety-three percent. A hundred, you know, ten kids that aren't graduating either class out of a, out of a class of a hundred and thirty or a hundred and thirty-one. But we know why. They're either special ed kids, or they're, you know, they're, they didn't, they didn't have enough credits in the course of three, but they're graduating in the fifth year. So, you know, our, our, and I don't, I can't recite the dropout rate off the top, but, but our graduation rate is right smack dab in the middle of our dirt, from the low at eighty-six to the high at ninety-five. Not doing so bad, but we're, but the, the issues that we're targeting are the things that are gonna take us to that next step, that are gonna help make sure that all of our kids are ramping up to that next level, so that, that we're not, we're not leaving any kids behind, and we close, you know, this proverbial achievement gap. But it, it takes more than just the, you know, the, the, the classroom teacher every day, and they're doing that.
Well, you know what I think you're gonna see a lot more of in the very near future, is the fact that it's just gonna be out of the reach of a lot of students to go to college at all. I mean, education costs being what they are and the outlook of, and frankly, if I wanna see. An increase like this, I'd rather see it go towards, towards those students that aren't headed for college. I mean, I know we all look at college acceptances and continuing education as the, as the bar that's set for how well a, a school system is doing. But there are a lot of kids in Clinton who, for whom college is not an option.
Correct.
And frankly, that.
Our career pathways for those students have been ramped up as well, so that we have a sequence of courses that they can pass through, so that when they leave here, they're equipped to take on the world of work or, or perhaps a technical school, that they can get, you know, or a trade school of some sort. But, but what we've been saying for the last five years, since we did our high school of the future study, is that when we look at our foundation skills and competencies, those are the kinds of things that every single kid need to be able to demonstrate at a high level. No kid can graduate from our school without being able to read a technical manual or a Shakespeare. And the reality is, is that reading a technical manual is probably more difficult than reading Shakespeare. And so there is no longer an opportunity for kids to kind of do the bare minimum. The, you know, our tracking system that we've had for years is outmoded. We, there is no kid that can't, that shouldn't be leaving high school without having taken algebra two or more. There isn't any kid who shouldn't be, you know, shouldn't have four years of math, four years of science, four years of history. They need to have it regardless of whether they're going to a technical school or whether they're going to a tier one school. And that is what we have continued to strive for from the, the day I walked in to today, to the day that I decided not to do this anymore. That our work is about making sure that we're addressing the needs of all of our kids and that we don't leave gaps in our, in our work, in our program. And I'm, you know, on one level, I, I could come in and say, you know, I'm sorry that we're looking at a three point one percent increase. And from a dollar standpoint, I wish I could figure out a way to do it less for less money. But from the needs of our kids, that's what we believe we need at this point in order to move forward. And if I get a whole bunch of retirements, and, you know, we, we end up with knowing that we're, for, you know, our cost or our personnel is gonna go down, then so be it, then we can, then we can say, here's, here's what we got, that you can expect for the, the town to get back. But I can't do that without those, that information. I can't, because the two areas that are where we, the surplus is coming, again, personnel, retirements, and insurance. I don't believe we're gonna see, you know, additional savings in, in insurance this year. I don't know that yet, you know, we don't have those final numbers, but the projections around the state are, you know, high single digits, again. And, you know, we're, we're looking at trying to level fund it and hold to, hold that. And then, and with personnel, again, if, if I knew in advance that we were gonna have five or six or seven, then we could, we could cut that margin in terms of what I project for personnel in the following year. We haven't, we haven't convinced anybody on the, especially in the teachers' union, that telling us in advance of the budget is useful for us, useful for them at this point.
So I think that the new positions that they're requesting actually hit on your point exactly. I mean, these aren't, these aren't new positions intended to help people get to college. They're guidance of math intervention specialists and literacy intervention specialists. These are to help those people who, who are having trouble. And, and I think people who sit on, you know, the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance, who are not only concerned about education, but also on the town, need to recognize some of those factors that make this town, they call it a vibrant community, right? You make this town a vibrant community when you can, when you can show that you're taking care of the kids, and that's what this math, the current math intervention specialist is doing, you know. They're helping the teachers, and they're helping those kids, and they're seeing, you know, a decrease in the amount of kids who are dropping off that spectrum. And, and they're, they're working with them. And, and increased test scores and graduation rates and college rates and all goes to the reputation of a town. And, you know, when the reputation gets better, it becomes a vibrant community, a place where people do wanna live and people, and do wanna send their kids to school. Once you have those people coming in, then you have an economy, and then you have businesses that wanna come, because you have the people that are living here that can go and spend money in, in the downtown, and that's what we're all thinking of it. And I don't think you should forget that, that schools and, and, and investing in schools is part of that. And again, to just say, how can you ask for a million dollars when you've had, you know, these blanket statements, is, I find completely insulting to all of the work that, and each individual school came in, and I don't know if any of you have gone to the individual budget workshops, where each individual school prepared a PowerPoint that's all online, that said, here's what we need and here's why we need it. And again, the Board of Education, you know, looked at that and vetted it. I mean, for us to just say, how dare you come in, you know, for the million dollars, I mean, they're not just coming in a million dollars. They're saying, here's what we need to, to help our students, to help our teachers. And so I don't think that we should just blow that.
It's less than a million dollars.
I, I, maybe you took what I said wrong, I mean, I, for all that stuff, actually, I utilized it when I went to high school for special needs and stuff. So I'm not saying that way, I'm just saying that I think there's different ways to approach a budget, you know, and I would just start from a, from the back and work forward. I don't think we should lose any position, but I'd like to see these added. It's not what I'm saying, I, I, and I'm not saying it's easy, Jack, and I apologize, I came across Phil, you know, like I didn't think anybody put anything, I just, it is, I'm, the Carol's thing, it's tougher, like especially people like myself that have multiple businesses in town. And with all these things coming on the horizon, it's getting tougher and tougher, like Phil was saying, because the parents are out working and stuff, they're not, because we are paying high, it's taxes and all the different stuff that we have to do. It's very difficult to have a business, and you gotta think with the, and you know, I see around here, there's guy, people here that have businesses, it's tough. And, and you wanna, it's just tough to swallow, and we have this looming, the, the school, the sewers, whatever it may be. It's getting very difficult to live here. And I've been here my whole life, I've had my business here for twenty-five years, and my kids have grown up here, so it's not like I haven't seen the highs and lows of this community. And I went to school here, and. And I went to school here and, you know, it's just, it's tough to swallow when you see, and I, I, you know, I apologize, Jack, if it came across just crass, like what the hell did you put a million dollars on for? But, you know, you know, they say every household or whatever it's, you know, X amount of dollars. Well, when there's people that have businesses and on multiple stuff here, it's not that. It's, it's a huge increase. So it just, I don't know.
So where we are now then is, you know, it's up to us to then, if you don't agree with that, to suggest what?
No, I know, and we just got this stuff and I, I want to look through it and maybe the way I came along was.
That's next week and then on the Stephen.
And, you know, I don't want to put, that you guys think about it or you guys don't care. Of course you do. And you want, I want the best for the students too. I mean, my daughter goes to school there. I mean, you know, I, I, but I just think we have to think about the people too.
I have something to say about something that has led me to do with the classroom, addition of classroom personnel. The hundred and ten thousand dollars for the business administrator. This board, remember last year, it spent two hundred and thirty five thousand dollars on new accounting software. We, it's going to, we haven't got it up and running yet, but it will be in July. It will streamline the accounting process. It will make things more transparent, centralize it and cut costs. Our auditor is advised that it would be a break in to consolidate the finance management for both the Board of Education and the town. We spent a million dollars on the annex to brand new offices.
Two million.
Two million dollars. For offices specifically for. I, I just wonder what, how, how prudent is at this point to say we need this extra person without having seen what the implications of all of these expenses from this new software is.
Well, we, we have discussed at great length this, this position and the benefits that it's going to bring to the Board of Ed by being able to have a superintendent and several other administrators spend their time doing the job of education and not doing the job of crunching numbers. The amount of work and time that Superintendent Cross has put into this budget for the last five years where we've had one shared person.
But that's why we spent this two hundred and thirty five million to easy to print reports.
No, two hundred and thirty five thousand.
Two hundred and thirty five thousand.
Right.
Easy to print reports.
And there's nothing, there's nothing to show that having new software and still one shared person is going to give us any more benefits.
Exactly, my point. There is no point. I mean, at this, at this stage, you're kind of at one foot on one bridge, side of the bridge and one on the other. I'm wondering how it was demonstrated in dollars and cents, what the.
The need for us to have a business manager?
All of these other steps that the town has taken makes, I don't understand.
It's at least one third of his time spent working on budgets. Because this is not just a, a process that starts in October as the, as the calendar shows and ends tonight after this presentation. This is something that goes on throughout the entire year. The board is constantly working with the superintendent on trying to make sure that we can contain the costs to the best of our abilities and still improve the educational process in the district. And when he is spending the majority of, or a third of his time at least on crunching numbers, where if we had a business manager, over half of that time can then be released back into working in the system as an educational professional and not somebody that is a business manager. He has been acting as the quasi-business manager.
Someone's better. The numbers have to come from somewhere. I, I don't, I don't, I assume superintendent's crunching numbers. That's part of their.
But no, they, they do crunch numbers, but it's not, okay. To give you an analogy, in the business world, in your business and my business, I've got auditors and I've got accountants. Okay? I know the numbers and I expect Mr. Cross to know the numbers when we have the business manager in place. But I'm not the one that sits there crunching those numbers.
No, our history has been that we've had one person that.
And that one person has never worked effectively because they can't put up with the total amount of work. When you have the requirements.
I don't understand the statement. They have to work effectively and the budgets haven't been done?
Why have we lost two in?
This is the second year that, that the superintendent and the first electman have.
Third year.
Is it the third year in a row?
Yeah, not in a row.
Third year out of the last four. After, yeah, because Kevin's came in at the late end and then there was one year. So that's daunting. I mean, we understand that.
It's a huge task for one individual. When they're required to be at the Board of Ed meetings twice a month, have to sit there and go through all these processes, have to come in for negotiations on various.
We don't need to hire somebody hundred and ten thousand to go to do this.
Well, what will the relationship be between the current finance director?
Right, I think that's the, the point about.
I was going to say, I think our finance department is pretty much in flux right now, people. And I don't think we've been able to figure out the organization to optimize exactly whatever.
We need to look at the flow chart.
Does that mean a bunch of business managers?
Yeah, I mean, I asked.
Am I correct? Like I said, I think it's in flux right now.
We need an org chart.
Or work on it.
But the request is there.
And it's being worked on.
Being worked on. And I talked to Superintendent today, made discussions with the finance board chairman. I think we're probably going to have another meeting in the future.
And we also have a meeting on the search committee for the finance director.
On the night. Here we go.
Do you guys have?
Multiple eyes reading resumes.
Person, I mean, what is the, the highest sort of admin person?
There's no human resources.
I know, but maybe, but maybe that's it.
Good luck, good luck.
Differently, I mean, maybe.
You don't like the final agreements.
You brought up the flow chart. We don't have really a solid flow chart.
I asked Willie for, you know, an org chart for the town side and I think I'd, I'd like to get this.
This way, like a funnel. It's like a funnel. I'm at the bottom.
I, I think that there are questions that need to be answered, whether or not we. You know, I hate to say negative, but as a business manager and a business manager, when maybe it's something different. I mean, you know, you look at other towns and there's a payroll director and a benefits director.
I'll put it in. We're, 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 we're small, relatively small. We can't afford that kind of stuff.
I can look at other towns that are the same, same, aside as us. But, you know.
Well, we're, we're at the doorstep of a fifty million dollar a year operating budget.
Correct. That doesn't mean anything as far as.
Well, it's primarily being.
Dollars are the dollars, whether it's a hundred million or fifty, it doesn't matter.
It comes down to who's overseeing.
Who's paying the bill is what matters.
And it's oversight.
The size of our operation, although dollar wise has got, has increased. We haven't increased facilities. We've actually reduced our facilities to an extent. We haven't increased the size of our, our, our staff, particularly on the sound side, town side. So I don't see the need to expand into all these other, other, other areas.
Bureaucracy. It's mandates from the state and the feds.
If we wanted to be the state of Connecticut or we wanted to be in Washington, we could do that. But we don't, we don't operate like that around here. I think ultimately the finance director has to have oversight of the business person at the Board of Ed because ultimately the finance director is responsible for the order. And that's what we discussed when we met in December at the Board of Ed with Phil and Leah, Dennis, and Carol and Jack. But we're going to have more meetings about how it's going to be set up.
We have a semantic argument.
Right, at this point, we're, we're hoping we can find somebody who can do one job right now and hang on to whoever it is for more than eight months or a year and a half, whatever it is.
At the end of the day, Board of Ed does what it does when it gets its money. You know, I mean, what we're trying to do is just avoid any kind of problems as we go into future years.
Somebody over here knows what's going to and do twos and do froms and this and that. I think we're getting away from the one bank account. Again, thank God.
But I think, yeah, the other component and one of the issues from my vantage point is that with the, with the increasing regulatory pieces on the Board of Ed side from a finance standpoint and from a grants and finance standpoint, is that, you know, realistically in, in the, this transition this last time around with business manager, finance director concept, there were opportunities that we were not able to take advantage of because we didn't have the resources to, to attack some additional grants here or there. And, you know, I, I see the benefit of having a full time finance person, business manager, certified business manager on the Board of Ed side, being able to assist in those areas where realistically could pay for himself in, in assisting with grant writing. While they wouldn't necessarily be the grant writer per se, they would be able to access that information and, and provide all of the background that, that, that we would need. And instead of us doing all of the budgeting kinds of things, we can be focused on, you know, advancing some of the, the grant work that we need to be focused on. You know, to be, to, to run a, a two thousand student, two hundred and sixty eight, sixty nine individual business, thirty million dollars, whatever, and not have someone who is, you know, really, you know, working those books. Because ultimately, over the course of the last three years, I might argue longer, the reality is business manager, superintendent, and human resources person. Now, some of those pieces get delegated out, but ultimately I'm responsible for, for them. And without somebody in those chairs, it falls to me. And, you know, it's good. I mean, we're, we're doing good work. We've hired good people. Our budgets are sound, a little high this year. But it's, but it's, they're needs based. They're focused on what we need for our district and for our kids. I'll get off my gander.
I, I don't have any questions. I'm good. Any other questions? I mean, it's a workshop, so if there's no other questions, we'll convene the meeting, we'll, in the meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.